I thought about it. I think I've been able to unmute everyone that needs to be unmuted.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kim McCormick. I'm the interim director here at CFCI. And first of all, we just want to thank everyone who's joining or has joined the meeting already. This is a town hall that we decided to, along with the board, decided last week that we thought that it was important as more information comes out and as we continue to make decisions about the reopening of school, that we wanted to hear your voices. And so we decided as a team that we would put a panel together. We would put a form out that we could have you answer questions or ask questions, sorry, so that we could answer them for you. We got quite a few and about, I think, 22 altogether. Those will be posted or if they're not already posted on the website so that you can follow along with us. That's the format that we're using tonight. And we plan on recording. We're recording the meetings so that for people that are unable to come tonight, it will be available to them. And we will also use the questions that we've gathered so far as a starting point for a fact sheet. We've started creating a fact sheet for all of this, but that will be posted to the website and we can continue to add the answers that we're giving tonight. But also, as new questions come up, we want to be available to you and we want to be as transparent as we possibly can. And that's the whole goal of this tonight is to be here for you. People are, there's so many people that are working so incredibly hard, you know, in the front lines and behind everyone. And we just want everyone to know that. We know as families, I say this often to you in the community update, you're our partners and we feel that more than ever now. And I hope you feel the love right back. You know, teachers who are working incredibly hard, you know, all of our TAs, staff members, administration, the board, just everyone is just really putting forth so much effort. And so, you know, I hope you feel that. I mean, I hope you know that. I know that we're not all on the exact same page. And this survey actually, there's these questions rather actually really showed it to me. I mean, I know that we've got people that are perfectly comfortable staying remote. And then I've got, we've got people that are wondering why we aren't going back in Plan A. So there, and then there's everybody in between, the ocean in between. So just know that we are all, the bottom line is we do want children back in this building. We want everyone to be together, teachers, students, families. We just really want everyone back together in the end. But sometimes that takes time and I'm sorry that it's trying some people's patience. I really get it. I, you know, I think we all do. No one thinks that their only decision is the right one, but together we're trying to make this work. So tonight, this forum is that we will, we've received, like I said, I think 22 questions. We've have a panel gathered, but more importantly, we have Steve Axum, who is our, on our board representing the PCN. And he's agreed to be our facilitator tonight. And so I'm going to let him introduce our panel. And then that will be all you'll hear from me, other than when I'm answering a question. So just again, thank you very much for coming and being a part of this important, you know, town hall.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Steven Axum. I serve on the board as a representative of the parent partnership. And I will be tonight's facilitator. I'll be reading the questions that have been submitted for the town hall and directing them to our panelists. Our panelists tonight are Jenny Campbell, she's a behaviorist social worker. Mihal Cohen, school counselor. Lisa Cole, academic support services. Mallory Hickey, business operations. Kim McCormick, interim director. Alan McNauton, coordinator of student services. And Kelly Rooney, EC compliance coordinator. As Kim has already stated, a recording of tonight's town hall along with frequently asked questions will be posted on the school's website at cfci.net. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to your child's teacher or school or school administration to point you in the right direction. So if we want to start, let's get onto our first question. The first set of questions are directed to Kim McCormick and Mihal Cohen. And her is, okay, what metrics are being used to determine having students in school? In what event will these metrics change or will they be consistent? Is it, if there is a rise in numbers in New Hanover County or statewide, will CFCI close again? Is there any responsibility or circumstance in which CFCI will not reopen campus? What is the CFCI plan to help children whose threat is not physical but mental health? If remote learning is not working for kids and CFCI refuses to open, can those children take a leave and retain their spot to relieve pressure at home?
So thank you, Steve, for that question. So the metrics, I'm going to try to go right down through the questions. I'll just pop over one that Mihal will be answering, but I thought that was the best way to do it. So the metrics that we're using are those that are put out by the New Hanover County. They're also put out by the state and they're put out by the CDC. We've posted on the, our website, the actual CDC metrics. So you can go there to see what the recommended numbers are as we're making decisions based on our numbers that we see in New Hanover. So there, we also work in conjunction with the Department of Health and Human Services here in New Hanover County and keep a pulse on what those numbers look like. One of our teachers, Brandt Hart, has done a great job of putting a metric up for us. And the numbers that we do look at as a board and as a school include positive test, positive test rates and also the numbers that are trending in terms of actual cases. So those are two numbers, two metrics that we look at consistently. And that's, you know, when I look at that question of being consistent, those are consistent numbers. But please do look at the, the link that we have, sorry about that, link that we have posted with the CDC guidelines on our website because that will take you to all of the different kinds of metrics and what those numbers look like for us. Right now, we're actually trending in the right direction. The positive test rates have started to decline in New Hanover County. And we're actually seeing that Pender County, for the current numbers, have actually started trending above us. So those are, those are some of the numbers we're looking at, but I'd love for you to look at those numbers on our website. And then they will take you to places like New Hanover County and the CDC to give you a more accurate count. If there's rise, let's see, if there is a rise in numbers, will we close again? Any school could close, especially if their numbers do rise at a, you know, a big rate or a big jump or alarming rate. That would also be something that it might not be up to us. It might be up to the, to the state if the governor decides to close or if the, or if the county, you know, is, we're having those kind of numbers that may make us in a untenable position. So there is a possibility that it could close again. And it might not just be the numbers. It could be because there's some type of a case, an active case happening in our school. There could be a number of reasons that we would close again. But as a, as a school, we have been looking at the numbers very carefully and trying to follow along with that. Is there a reason that we would not open, reopen campus? So our goal all along has been to get us to a point where we can reopen. We are, we had been doing this on a month-to-month basis, trying to get ahead of the curve for parents, especially if they were having to look for childcare. This pass vote that the board had was the first time we've jumped more than month-to-month at a time. And we decided to do that only because, the recommendation was only because if we went to the end of October, we'd have two weeks left in November that were part of our grading period. So we felt it was a more consistent model for kids and a more consistent model for the school to have all of the first trimester be remote. And that would be a more accurate picture when people were looking at those, those reports. So is there any circumstances that we would not, again, our goal has been to move in that direction. I think we've done a good job. I think we're really getting there. And I think the reports that you'll hear at the next, the way we're doing this is on October 13th, we're doing a presentation meeting to the board with all of our committee reports. We have a governance ad hoc that has committees feeding into it from our instructional committee and our technology committee and our wellness committee and our school operations committee. So those recommendations and those updates to the board helps them understand a little bit more about how the school is prepared. So we're getting, we're really there. On top of that, we look at the metrics, in addition to the metrics that I just talked about from the county and state, the other metrics that we're going to be looking at this time, and we do have some numbers now, would be academics, how this is impacting kids and social, emotional and mental health. So we will be looking at some other metrics this time. Then what will happen, there will not be a vote. In the previous board meetings, we've had the vote the same day. We're not going to do that. We're going to have our regular, regularly scheduled board meeting on the 20th. So that's a little bit different. And at that time, we will make a decision about what will happen as of November 13th. But in the meantime, we have started bringing small groups in for assessments and getting children in the building so that we can plan and troubleshoot and still assess and still teach and try to do some of those things. So we're trying to be creative and think outside the box. And hopefully that's, you're seeing some of that as, as teach, as parents. The last thing is if remote learning is not working for kids and we refuse to reopen, can children take a leave? Unfortunately, as a charter school, we are based on the lottery system. And so once you leave the school, your spot basically becomes open. There's no reserving spots. And this is not for, this is not coming from us. This is a state requirement. It's part of our charter. It's part of the lottery system. So unfortunately, I, I can't give you that positive answer that I know many people might want to hear. It really is, if you leave, unfortunately, you would have to go back into the lottery system to be accepted back into the school. Mihal, would you like to answer your part of the question?
So what is the CFCI plan to help children whose threat is not physical but mental health? We started, really, we started putting a plan together back in the spring when the ad hoc committees were put together, the return to school ad hocks. And Jenny Campbell and Kelly Rooney and I are the Wellness Ad Hoc Committee. And we meet weekly. We, I meet weekly with the return to school committee and share that information. And it's a constant conversation between all of us as a team and with the MTSS lead team. We are, we are always focused on what the children need. And we know, as a parent, I definitely know how very hard everything is right now. everything is right now. And we are always focused on that and trying to bring new things in and put plans into place, including the Rhythm App is a great thing that we just started using to get a sense daily of how students are doing. Every morning and weekly and looking at the trends of, of how the students are doing. We meet with the teachers constantly, data meetings. We are always communicating to hear and to, to find out how students are doing. Aside from that, we're just, we're always here. So even if, you know, we put a survey out and that was the most recent thing that we did to get a sense of how people are doing and to offer any support. But you are always welcome to contact your child's teacher about your child's mental health concerns and, or your concerns about your child's mental health. And you are always welcome to reach out to us. But we definitely start with your child's teacher. Thanks. To then answer that part, did I forget something?
Good, Mihal, that was great. Thank you.
Trying to rush.
Thank you so much for that. The next question is also going to be pointing toward Ms. McCormick. There are a few schools that have gone back to fully in-school learning. Cape Fear Academy and St. Mark's, which is K three, the K to three fully in-person. Obviously, these private schools with additional, additional funding. However, what steps have they taken in order to safely reopen? What do their classrooms look like and can CFCI do the same? Has someone reached out to them to discuss what is working and not working for them? What are the metrics that must be met or maintained for our school to move forward with an opening plan?
Thank you. So I, I think the way to address the question is yes, we know that schools have gone back or are going back. I meet with charter school leaders at least once a week, if not twice, including some of the charter school leaders that are here in our, in, in New Hanover. And we actually text back and forth and talk about what's happening, what's working, what's not working. When we, when I first started meeting with, with virtually online with the charter school leaders from the state, the, the first numbers coming out were really good, that things were going well. It was promising. I was, you know, it was great to be able to share good stories with teachers and with the board and, you know, with the community that I spoke with. But they're not all without, you know, fault and not all without some issues. So although schools have gone back, I mean, even one of our charter schools, a new charter school here in the, in, in New Hanover has gone back and they've had to close twice already. So they've closed once for two weeks and they closed once for three days. So it doesn't mean that because you go back, you don't, you, you stay open, you, you may have with COVID, we know that. And, and so it, that it, that it, maybe we have to close again. Now, we know that it doesn't mean that everybody has, you know, the, the whole school has to close depending on what the, what the, you know, proximity and all of the, you know, parameters were. But in this particular case, we know of a school that's closed twice. And that's what I'm trying to keep track of, not, but not just the not good. I'm also really trying to keep track of where has it been successful? And exactly like the question is asking, what, what are people doing to make it right? So things like following the guidelines, you know, social distancing, making sure everyone's wearing masks, cleaning, you know, all of that, taking health protocols when we first come in the building, temperature checks for everyone. We do that faithfully with everybody coming in the building now. So getting all of those pieces in place so that when we do have children coming into the building, we are ready and we are doing the right things. Because the more you do all the, all the right protocols, the less risk that you actually have. And you'll see on that CDC chart that that's what it says. So yes, and you talk about the classrooms, what do they look like? So some are bigger than ours. I mean, some, you know, lend themselves a little bit more to this type of thing. When about a month ago, Mallory Hickey, our business operations coordinator, had teachers looking at their rooms and deciding, you know, exactly what their room setup would need to look like in a hybrid model. You know, we did things like order, you know, Plexiglas dividers. We did things like make sure that, you know, the, the, all the hallways were marked at six foot intervals to show children and adults, you know, how, how to act in a room. And so we, I, I think we've done a lot of great things that other schools have done. Some of the things, you know, that, that are happening, and it's true, like a, a place like Cape Fear Academy definitely has more money than we do to, you know, provide different types of, either more teachers or more staff or, you know, possibly different, different types of outdoor venue or whatever it is. I mean, we have a new parking lot being built, a four eight playground parking lot. So we have a whole section of our school that's not even usable right now. So we're, we're feeling the punches left and right for sure. But, you know, because of that type of funding, because of that, that type of additional, you know, ways of, of being able to be helpful to a school, it doesn't mean that we're down and out. We've got, you know, other great things that are going on in our school that, that are really helpful. We're flexible, we, we can think ahead. It's just that we hadn't got, we haven't gotten there yet. And so where some schools may feel the pressure to reopen or have the right types of, you know, staffing to reopen, we just haven't gotten there yet. I, I think we're, I think we're able to report really good news at the next meeting. But I think that, you know, it's something that it's, you know, with trends with, with, and this answers the other, the metrics piece with trends, with metrics and trends go, you know, going in the right direction. I think that, that we're getting ready and, and, and I think we will be ready. And it's, it's disheartening, I know, for people that, that, you know, need their children to be here for many reasons. Not just that they're, this is a financial burden and we understand that. But also because kids' mental health are, you know, is our priority, you know, social, emotional, just them being friends and it doesn't work on a Zoom that way. Their academics, all of the things, you know, that, that have to happen, we understand. And so I think that we have, I've reached out, I've done those things and, and I, I get great information. And I've had some of the board teachers come in. I've invited others to come in and listen to some of these, participate in some of these charter school meetings, because I think it gives people some ideas and gives us a, you know, better leverage. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. The next question we have is for Alan McNuttin. Our family would like to opt to remain virtual even after the school moves to hybrid learning. Can you please advise if we may elect to remain virtual for the second trimester ending February 24th? And if so, when such an option may be made available? Also, has there been any discussion about allowing families to opt into virtual only for the remainder of the school year?
Um, yeah, so the, the first part of that question, I think most people probably have already know the answer to. We sent a survey out towards the end of last week, asking parents if they would like to remain virtual through February 24th. And we have had several parents that have taken us up on that offer. So we're making plans and making adjustments for that as well. We have, we, there has been a little bit of discussion around the possibility of offering families the opportunity to remain virtual for the remainder of the school year all the way into June. However, in, in the course of that discussion, we believe that the best instructional strategy available is to do it, is to instruct our students in person. So our goal is always going to be to bring students back into the building, because we believe that is the best option for teaching them. Obviously, we're going to be paying attention to the metrics that Kim discussed a little bit earlier, as well as recommendations from our governor, making sure that we're doing everything we need to. We realize that at this point, June is still six plus months away. So we, we're trying to take this kind of one step at a time, looking at each trimester individually and then making that decision as we get a little bit closer. But like I said, our, our primary goal is to bring as many students back into the building as possible and all of them if we can. So while there has been a little bit of discussion about that, at this time, we are not prepared to offer virtual learning through the remainder of the year. We're just looking at through February 24th. And depending on metrics and the governor's recommendation, we may look at offering that again in the future.
Thank you. So question number four, you've kind of answered that question in the question you just had. So I'm going to skip to number five if that's okay. On the next set of questions is for Kim McCormick and Mallory Hickey. Um, will it be a full or half day? Can we see a sample schedule? Will teachers be expected to teach in-class students and remote students simultaneously? Will we start in November or later? And what happens if a student or staff gets COVID? Where does the domino effect end? If somebody's family gets it at another school, does that put the class at CFCI in quarantine?
So, um, so what I would say that is it a half day or full day? So at the last board meeting, we asked if we went into hybrid model. What, what was the decision? We had recommendations for both types of days. How they would look a half day or a full day? It's really a little over a half a day is what we were thinking about. Students would begin getting dropped off at 7:30 and by one o'clock, they would be picked up. So that's actually the model, the plan for our hybrid is a, is an A B day. Two, an A would be two days a week, Monday, Tuesday. And then the B would be, the B group would be Thursday, Friday for those two days. And on the other days that they're not in-person learning, they will be learning remotely and everyone's remote on Wednesdays. In terms of, so, so, yeah, so it, it's a little bit over a half day. It's really an abbreviated day is what we're talking about. And the reason why we're doing that is because, and some of this answers some of the questions that you'll start hearing a little bit further down. And even this, it's, to be able to teach the amount, the number of groups and, and students in their different various learning environments, there's a lot of planning that goes into that. And there's, there needs to be time for check-ins. Teachers are teaching synchronously, that means simultaneously to some degree, but not all teachers. Some are teaching part of, of a lesson and then going into small groups. That's, that's our K through five model is very much like that. We need a lot of time in small groups with children. And so that direct instruction model just doesn't work to have them in front of a, a camera for a long period of time. But we're, we're working on that. We did order cameras and you'll hear a little bit about that later, that teachers are going to be able to use. I mean, they can obviously do Zoom, that type of thing. But they do have cameras and microphones that they can use to be able to do synchronous learning. So that barrier is no longer there, not to be able to do it. Are they expected to teach in class and simultaneously? So no, the expectation is not there. It certainly is, it's the right thing to do if it, if it works. I, I know in the middle school, the math, the, the math teachers there have said they would like to teach synchronously. So really, it depends on what you're teaching and how you're teaching it. The other thing is we don't want students on a Zoom for, for five hours for the day. We just, we just don't believe in it. And so that would be another hard expectation that if, if we had everybody doing simultaneous or synchronous learning, it, it would be a, it would be more than what we would recommend for our, our students. Will we start in November later? So that, I, I think as we've said before, that, that vote will come up and we'll make recommendations based on metrics, several different metrics and recommendations. But if, if we, if the board decides that that's the right thing for us, then we're ready to go. That's, that's the way the teachers feel. That's the way that our whole school feels. We're, we're ready to go when, when the decision is made. But that doesn't mean we haven't finished planning. And that's a really important piece of this. And as we talk a little bit more about schedules, that's important to note that everything's not perfect. You asked about a sample schedule. We'll be able to provide a sample schedule. We've got some working. And then sometimes we think about something else that needs to be done and then we have to tweak it and change it a little bit. So we, we'll be able to give you some sample schedules, you know, within the next three weeks or so. And teachers would do that. Teachers would reach out to you to give you what, what you need. And then that's it. And Mallory, would you like to answer the rest of the question?
Yeah, absolutely. So our protocol at CFCI is to work with DHHS. They have specific people that we can call into and ask questions about scenarios that come up. And as you've seen and heard, things change, scenarios change. The guidelines tend to change. And so to stay current and make sure that we are doing the right thing for our staff and students and family, we will always call a DHS representative first to give us direction on who is going to be quarantined or what the contact tracing is, or is it the class or the staff or, you know, just a, a few students, you know, we won't really know that until that scenario comes up. And we work with that representative to give us advice and help guide us forward. We do have some guidance. I believe we have a link on our website to a COVID reference guide that will lay out a few of those protocols. And you're welcome to take a look at that. That is a helpful tool. But alongside of that, we will always call DHHS and get recommendations.
Thank you so much. Next question we have is for Alan McNuttin. Why do none of the surveys include Plan A as an option? The responses we're able to choose from are worded in a way that I do not agree with any of them. What steps are you taking to move toward Plan A?
So, um, yeah, we are aware that obviously none of the surveys did include a Plan A as an option. When reviewing the recommendations from the state and from the governor, we were currently in a Plan C and we believed that it was in the best interest of all of our kids, safety and security, as well as providing the best instruction possible to move towards a Plan A. But we were not in a position to move directly into Plan A. We believe that the, the most effective way to keep all of our students safe was to move from Plan A into Plan B, start that process, make sure that we had everything in place that we needed to, and then move into a Plan A. So we are currently bringing small groups of students or planning to bring small groups of students into the building in order to start facilitating that process with the goal of moving into a fully hybrid or Plan B model as early as the board votes on it. And then from there, we will move, take steps towards Plan A. So we are in the planning stages of moving towards that. But at this time, we are, the majority of our efforts are going into the hybrid model to make sure that we do that and that we are taking care of everything that we need to, to move in that direction.
Thank you. The next question, I'm going to do a little paraphrase of them. It's for Kelly Rooney, Lisa Cole and Jenny Campbell. Why is it, it seems as though CFCI is the most equipped to go back to in-person learning when in comparison to others in the county? But we are most likely going to be the last to come back this year.
Yeah, so, um, just, we are, um, we, sorry, let me find my words. We do want to go back and I think Kim touched on most, most of this in a previous answer, so I won't take too much time. We know that there have been schools and daycares that have opened successfully. And we also know that there's ones that have had to close and have not been successful. Being a smaller school doesn't equate to this problem being easier or this, this gigantic task of, of hybrid learning or, or returning to school being easier because our resources are limited. So that, I'm sorry, I'm getting like a really weird echo. Okay, it's gone. So that's part of it. We don't have the resources that New Hanover County has or that private schools have. We do have resources and we do have, you know, we're able to, to provide instruction for our kids. But it, it does look different than New Hanover County and private schools.
So the next question basically is the same question that you just answered. On considering the county, it's for Ms. Kelly Rooney also. Consider the county schools and other charter schools are moving away from remote learning and private schools and daycares have been full in-person successfully. Please help us understand why CFCI, a small charter school that does not have to bus students or feed students, can make their own decisions about still remaining 100% remote?
Yeah, do you guys have, Lisa, do you guys have anything to add?
Yeah, I think we're just looking to make sure we have the most consistent instruction we can provide. That's stellar, consistent instruction. And so when our metrics have been very high in our county, we've been concerned about inconsistency in our instructions from going from remote to hybrid. Until those, those metrics leveled off, we really felt like our small school needed to stay safe. In a small school, you also have to remember that, for instance, my position or all our specialists test every single child in the school. And so, and so we're just really cautious, but also making plans to make sure we're safe and can bring kids in. So I think both things are happening simultaneously.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Cole, this question's also for you. Why has the board and administration opted to withhold the basic information of when classes will resume in person until their September 30th meeting?
Yeah, I'm part of the teacher board. I'm one of the five representatives of the teacher board. So I do sit on the board. Our board meetings are all open session for the public. They happen the second Tuesday of every month. You can access and join our board meetings using the zoom link on the front page of our CFCI website. At those open session meetings, you'll hear reports from each of the governance ad hocks that Kim was referring to and the first and I think first, second, first and second questions this evening. And those board meetings are an opportunity to not only have your voice heard, but to hear what plans are being made for the school and a lot of the background about what decisions, what led the board to certain decisions. So right now those, those meetings are open session and available for our community to join.
Thank you very much. This next question is for Ms. Jenny Campbell and Mr. Alan McNutt. In the last survey, there were questions regarding counseling support for children. But I have not received any information about this and do believe it would be beneficial for my child. Can someone get me some information for child counseling? What is the difference that CFCI compared to other schools receives in regards to both money and additional staffing?
I can take the first part. If, if you find that your child is struggling in any area of social or emotional or behavioral health, the first place you want to reach out to is your child's teacher and your teacher and the support staff are in close communication. And they will reach out to the appropriate support person to get your child the help they need.
Awesome. Thanks, Ms. Jenny. And I can kind of take the second part of that. The CFCI is a public school in the state of North Carolina, so we receive funding and staffing at the same ratio that every school in our, in the state of North Carolina receives. Part of the, the, one of the great things about that is for us is we are able to really use that money and those staff members strategically to help our specific group of students. In a larger district, they unfortunately, they have a much wider range that they have to take care of and they have to cover. Now that makes it more difficult for them to target on specific students and to help those, those specific students that need that support. But also on the flip side of that, they're able to spread those resources around to help and support several schools. While we are able to really zero in and support our specific student body, unfortunately, we don't have the benefit of being able to share resources among other schools. So it kind of, that sword, I guess you could say, it kind of cuts both ways. So we receive additional money and staff support from the state, just like every other school does. And we're able to use that strategically. But on the other hand, unfortunately, we, we can't share that burden among other schools either.
This is, this is Michael. I also, the first part, I do want to make sure to, to answer that, that at this point, when we got the question, I'm not sure when we got it, but at this point, we have responded to everyone who showed any, indicated any need for counseling or information on counseling.
Thank you for that. The next question we have is for Lisa Cole. My child is struggling with the current format. What extra help is available now at home for kids who are not learning well? My child is not doing well emotionally. What help is available for kids who need mental or emotional support?
Absolutely. I think Jenny mentioned briefly, but that, you know, the first line of contact for every family should be their classroom teacher. That is their, that is their main advocate and their main point of contact at any point, not, not just a pandemic. And the classroom teacher is going to understand your child's needs even more intricately than any of us on the support team could when that began, when that kind of process begins. So there, when I hear a question like what extra help is available, my kid's struggling, that could be so many different pieces, right? That could be technology, it could be academics, it could be all sorts of layers to that. So the classroom teacher is going to help remove those layers and get you to the right support. So please reach out to your classroom teachers. And then that second part of that, that question asked again about mental and emotional support, again, classroom teachers are going to be your first line of contact. We meet regularly with classroom teachers regularly. And so we're talking about your kids all the time. And so, and that's why we enjoy being back in the building and being able to talk about the kids and their needs all the time. So the better you get that information to your classroom teacher, the better we can help support your kids in every single way we can.
Thank you for that. Our next question is for Kelly Rooney. What is the protocol for mask wearing if and when the kids return to school? Will there be 100% mask wearing by all students and staff? Will there be any exceptions for masks as far as reasons not to wear them?
Yes, there will be 100% mask wearing for teachers and students. If there are medical exceptions, we will be addressing those on a case-by-case basis based on that individual's needs and the situation.
Thank you. And the next question is for Mallory Hickey. Is there a testing protocol in place to protect the school community? And if not, do you believe it is safe to open the school without one?
There are screening protocols in place that happen daily and follow the CDC guidelines. And then the testing and quarantine protocols really don't come up unless there's a exposure or known symptoms in the building. And again, we outlined earlier what we do in those scenarios or cases. And currently, yes, I do believe that our school is safe to open a hybrid model.
Okay, thank you. The next question we have kind of goes along with the same one. And it's also from Ms. Hickey. It's about the safety protocols that are planned for the school reopening. And is there anything that the parents can do to help the school welcome students back?
Yeah, that is, that question could be talked about for a long time. There's, there's a lot of things that, that have happened over the last several months to get our building and our operations ready. And I'll, I'll name a few of them, but I certainly won't be able to hit all of them. A few of those things are the screening protocols that have been put in place and have been tested and are working. We have signage around the building. We have decals on the floor for social distancing. Every classroom, as Kim alluded to earlier, has been looked at for safety, for six-foot distancing, for the best possible placement of students in each class and the safest spot for the teachers. We have installed all touchless, hand washing, station sanitation, paper towels. It's all touchless now. There are multiple cleaning procedures that have been put in place for teachers and our custodial staff has been amazing help to even cleaning out the building. We even rented a storage unit to get a lot of the clutter out of the building for the moment and make additional room for spacing in classrooms. I was trying to think of what else. The Plexiglas shields that have been ordered and are in procedures for drop-off and pickup have been changed and vetted and trained and flags ordered. There's just a multitude of things in the building that we have done to get ready for reopening. And what can parents do? The second part of that question, parents can help us by teaching their kids to wear a mask, how to wear it, why it's important, why it needs to be worn all the time in the building with no exceptions, how to wash their hands properly, why we need to keep the social distancing in place and, you know, and teach them how to do that and why it's important. So the more that students help educate, sorry, parents help educate their student on those protocols, the safer our school will be.
Thank you. This next one is for Kim Cormick. What does remote look like for those remaining off-campus? Will they keep the same teachers? Will the level of support drop with teachers trying to juggle on-campus and off-campus students? Can we request written instructions to go with video lessons for kids who are having a hard time with the, just as?
Sure. So listen, one of the things I think if you hear teachers, if you, if you talk with teachers, if you talk with your child's teacher, you will know that regardless of whatever plan we're in, they're going to do whatever it takes to get the children taught and learning. And they, they have such passion for making sure the kids, the kids are okay. So the question being, you know, will it look the same remotely as it does, you know, in class? Or does it look the same remotely as it does right now? It can't, it can't possibly look the same because a teacher can't be in, you know, three places at once. So it will look different. That's why we've been very careful about how we're going to come back. The, you know, I said earlier that the charter schools that I've been talking to, a lot of them are going with this abbreviated day, just so teachers can get the time they need with every single group of kids. If they were in the building and only teaching the kids in front of them for a full day, for example, the kids that are remote would only see them on Wednesdays potentially. It doesn't mean that a TA couldn't see them or, you know, another person, and we certainly rely on, on our, our teaching assistants. But it, it would not be the best model for kids and for teachers because they just wouldn't have the time. But the other thing is, is what we, what we've done is with that abbreviated day, it gives them a chance to in the afternoon, if they're not doing synchronous, if they're doing some synchronous, great, because the kids will see them in that respect. But a lot of times they'll have done videos and done like a flipped classroom where they'll have the kids watch the video and then they'll be working in front of them when they come in for the day. For those kids that are totally remote and, and any kid that's remote, there'll be check-in times in the afternoon as well when there would normally be it just in-class learning. So that gives hands-on, eyes-on for children in every mode and every plan for the teacher. It's a lot. It's, you know, as, as some of our board members say, it's, you know, please just skip hybrid, hybrid Plan B altogether. Because it's not, it's not easy for teachers and I worry about them. And I know all of you do too, about getting burned out. But, but this looks to be the, from what I've talked to other charter school leaders, one of the best ways to get kids back in and kids learning. And then the other thing is, is that our specialist will also be working with, with our remote children. And because it's that abbreviated day, teachers will be focused, classroom teachers will be focusing on the kids in the classroom all morning and up until 12:30. Excuse me, everybody. And then, but there will be lots of people touching in. So the teachers in the afternoon, the classroom teachers. There will be the specialist working with your children. Every day they'll have a special and teaching assistant. So you will, you will feel support. There will be good support. It's just that this is that equity of education, right? So it didn't feel equitable, felt equitable when they were all doing remote to some degree, but not really. And now we move to that next phase where it's still not going to feel quite right, but this is, this is what we know is, is good for children if, if the numbers are correct. So the last part of that question is, can we request written instructions to go with video lessons? I think some teachers are actually doing that, but certainly teachers are very, our teachers are very receptive to what's working, what's not working for kids, what's not working for parents, if they need, you know, more information. So the best thing you can do is to reach out to your child's teacher and ask, you know, is, is that something that you could, you could, your teacher could provide? And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised that they, they will be happy to accommodate for the most part.
Thank you very much. This next question's also for Ms. Kim Cormick. What would a typical middle grades day consist of? Would the students only be doing their four core classes? If this is so, what about the rest of the school day?
So in middle grades, we haven't quite finished planning, but, and, and it would be good to hear some of this from the, a middle school teacher. You know, so I know they will be getting information out to you. Cores really are an important part of the morning, just like they are when we are in school typically. The, the core classes are the ones that are the focus areas, but the specials are still an important part of the day. What will happen is there is an intervention and enrichment block that is planned during this, this period as well, when they're in person. But there will also be, again, the specialist will be working on the two specials that students have in middle grades. They will be working with them remotely. So they will continue with their remote instruction and then that's what, that's what will happen. So there'll be check-ins in the afternoon, activities given to kids going back home from, from being in person. And then everyone will get check-ins in the afternoon that are, that are remote and specialists will be working with students in, in the afternoon as well.
Thank you. And the next one's for Ms. McCormick also. I have children in fourth grade, third grade and kindergarten at CFCI. Virtual learning has not been easy for us. We often feel like prisoners to our Zoom schedule and I never feel like there's enough of me to go around. I would love nothing more than to send my kids to school two days a week, but I have concerns about going hybrid. How will we provide an equitable education to all students without exhausting our teachers? How can we expect teachers to keep up with students in Group A, students in Group B and students who remain 100% virtual?
It's the magic question. It's what we talk about with charter leaders and it's what all of our teachers talk about. And our TAs, our administration, we're all, we're all worried about each other, but especially our teachers who are working so hard already. We have to really maximize that time that they're doing in-person teaching. When those kids are in front of the teachers, they, they are 100% on, not that they normally wouldn't be, but that's, we have to maximize that time when they do come into the building. You know, teachers are going to be, you know, doing, and, and I think it's a great question, just in terms of somebody thinking about what this looks like and, and giving kids exactly what they need. You know, we're, we're trying to keep up with all the standards. We're trying to keep up with, you know, assessments and making sure that kids are, you know, that, that part of metrics work, where how are kids doing academically? How are they doing socially? We don't think we're doing a fabulous job, don't get me wrong, but we feel like kids are moving along. A lot of teachers are saying that they're getting more work done when kids, to some degree, when kids are remote because they're not, you know, there's not as much movement and there's not as much, you know, they're, they're really having to focus in and they can, they can get kids where they are. Now, of course, that depends on what age they are too, in our, in our younger grades. And I think some of the questions kind of refer to that. It's really difficult. I mean, no one's happy about kids not being here because they need to interact and, and teachers need to be hands-on and eyes-on with them. So, you know, teachers are monitoring children. They're adjusting the work that they're doing with children. They're, they're redoing lessons, they're, they're video lessons, they're working small group. It's all, you know, all so important. And, and all of this, while I know one of the questions referenced our inquiry model. It's all while trying to think about how do we get children to still be in that, in that practice and be in that space that, that who we are as a school. So please know that, that teachers are working hard. They, they're trying to balance this and get it right for kids. And, you know, again, looking at that equitable education, that's why I think some teachers have said it's, it, it feels more equitable when, when I'm doing the same thing. We know it's not completely right and, and we know that they need more. We don't want this model, this, this Plan C to continue, you know, forever. And, you know, somebody asked till the end of the year. No, absolutely not. We don't want it. But on the other hand, we have to, you know, we just have to be safe and we have to make sure children are safe. And, you know, younger children, the CDC has said, they don't, they don't, they don't present the same way. They don't spread it. They don't, they don't. It doesn't affect them the same way. Children, when they get to be 11 years old, they're twice as likely to be carriers and, and, and spread as, as the younger kids. And then you have, you know, your teachers. And then you have, you know, your teachers and, and your educators and TAs that are all, you know, in different states of, of how they can handle everything. And this is what's going around. I mean, regardless of if a school is open or not, I don't care if you're in New Hanover, I don't care if you're in, you know, Wilmington School for the Arts or Coastal Prep or wherever you are. Nope, there's no group of teachers that's thrilled about doing this. There's just not. And so I think you have to, you know, as, as, as parents, as, as a community, we've got to work together. We're, we're trying really hard. And I know when you're, you know, paying for additional childcare and you're, you know, your, your kids aren't doing what they're supposed to and you're not their best teacher, even though we're all trying. I get it. We all get it and, and we don't, you know, we don't want you to feel that way. And we do, we, we love our kids and we want them back here. And so over the next few weeks, I, I know you'll start to hear from some of your teachers about different things that they're doing. I mean, this week alone, we have some of our first graders coming in this week in small groups of five so that they can do some additional assessments and do some work together and, and just learn, learn about what schools like. I mean, they're only in first grade. They missed a third of their school year last year being in person. So again, we, we, we understand and just want you to know that, that we care. And, you know, even, even when you feel like you've hit a brick wall, just know we, we understand and, and we're, we're doing our best.
Thank you very much. This, the next question we have is for Mr. Alan McNuton. A parent survey went out that seemed to only give option one as a choice beside a radio button. Will this be reset in a complete option format?
So I, I was trying to interpret kind of exactly what this parent, I think what may have happened specifically with this choice is that the, maybe the survey didn't load completely for this, where there was several options to choose from. But as far as sending out an additional survey, at this time, there, we, we are not planning to do that. However, we obviously know it's a fluid situation, so we are continuously making adjustments and making sure we're getting feedback from all of our community. And we really appreciate all of the surveys that have been sent in, the survey that we sent out this past weekend. I want to say we're well above 80% and 80% response rate, which is great. We're aiming for 100%. So if you have not filled that survey out yet, we really encourage you to do so. But at this time, we do not have plans to send out an additional one until we get additional guidance from the governor and after our board meeting in October.
Thank you very much. Next question is from Ms. Kelly Rooney. Has there been any consideration with regard to hybrid Plan B? That bringing students back to the school just prior to Thanksgiving and winter break may not be the most wise decision. Why bring students together for a week, then out for a week, then back for two weeks, then out for two weeks? This puts students and their families at a much higher risk for exposure, particularly as families may gather for holidays. To me, it sounds like a logistical nightmare. Many colleges and universities have decided to end their semesters and send students home before Thanksgiving and not bring them back until January to avoid this dilemma. I wonder if CFCI would be willing to consider bringing students to school on hybrid Plan B starting in January and not November? Is the nine weeks mark so critical that any return to school decision must be tied to nine weeks? Or are there other timeframes as an option?
Those are all great points and definitely is going to be part of the conversations and discussions looking ahead to the board meeting in October. We will certainly be considering those, those pieces and talking about them in our ad hoc committees prior to the board meeting. Our goal is to get children in the building as absolutely soon as possible as it is safe to do so. So that is what we are, that's our primary concern right now. That is our goal first and foremost is to get kids in the building as soon as it is feasibly possible to do it. But those are important things to consider as well. There's pros and cons to time getting broken up and easing into it versus the inconsistency and, and all of that. So we will certainly be discussing those things. Ultimately, the timing is up to our board. So our board will be making that decision in October about next steps.
Thank you very much. Next question is going to go to Mr. Alan McNuton. Is it possible to use after Christmas break as the next possible school opening date rather than the end of the second trimester? Because that's so far away. It's really hard to make decisions now for the middle of February.
Absolutely is a valid question and I totally understand that. I had a parent actually email me a similar question earlier this morning and absolutely it is possible to use Christmas break as the next opening point rather than the end of the trimester. Obviously, we want students back in the building as soon as possible, but we also understand that there are safety considerations for our entire student body. So as of right now, we are offering that option through February 24th. However, if we make a decision to adjust that, we will absolutely be offering that option to parents to come back to school sooner. So I think I answered that question.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So the next question is for Ms. McCormick. You've already, this answer, this was already gone over on, but if you want to restate the percentage about the surveys?
Sure. Well, actually, I, I was going to tell you that, and I'm just, I had pulled up the surveys just so I know. So the first survey that went out about three weeks ago, maybe a little bit less, but about three weeks ago, before the September board meeting, just to get some rough numbers, we had a 91% participation rate, which was actually really amazing, I thought. And in that, in that survey, we had about 50% of our population, parents, families that said that they would like to move forward with hybrid. In the second survey that we just put out this past week, not this week, but, but just in the past week, we had a 94% participation rate, so even better than the first one. So that just left us with a, a few parents that still will reach out to you and, and find out what's going on. And I, and I know some parents really struggled with what decision, how to say it, especially if they decided on remote, knowing that they had to stay remote through February as opposed to parents that, or, and parents that felt like they didn't have the option at all that they wanted. I know we got a few emails from parents that, that felt that they really wanted A. And so what they were being offered wasn't anything and so they didn't fill out the survey. So I understand that as well. But that 94% rate, it's, it has gone up to 64, about 65% of the families would like hybrid. So that's, that's, that's a difference in the number of people that completed the survey and also a difference in the number of people that decided they wanted to go ahead and do hybrid. So that, that's that's just one number.
Thank you very much. The last question in the evening is for Mr. Alan McNuton and Ms. Kim McCormick. When we go to hybrid, will any of the classes have cameras for synchronous learning for the students at home? Has the school applied for grants? St. Mary's received a $30,000 in grants for the equipment. Since parents are not allowed to respond or ask questions in real time during the meeting, can we utilize the chat option if we need more clarification? And what are the reasons for parents not being allowed to ask in real time?
So I will, I can probably take the tech part and then, Kim, you can probably answer those other questions. Yes, there will be cameras in every single classroom. The, we ordered them about two weeks ago to make sure that they were here on time. And the, we have a camera for every single classroom in our school sitting in my office at the moment. There is going to be training for teachers during the day tomorrow so that they know exactly how to use that and some of the different options that are available so that they can use that the best way possible. But yes, we do have cameras for every classroom and we also actually have microphones for those teachers that are going to be moving throughout the room and may not be right in front of the microphone for the camera. So we've got several different options depending on the instructional strategy that the teacher wants to use.
Sorry about that. So to answer the, the second part of the question, it's a good, good question. Last week when we talked about doing a town hall, and I know this is, it's a different format, format with, with a panel and not having the chat open and not having that live kind of interaction. We really felt like we wanted to know what questions there were, but we wanted to be, be prepared for the questions and not feel like we were just, you know, shooting off, you know, off the hip about, you know, what, what might be the answers. So we were curious to see what kind of questions people would have. And we really felt that, you know, by doing this, we would, we would be able to build on a foundation of, of learning here by building a fact sheet. But also we think that there's been a lot of communication opportunities, you know, updates, surveys, you know, whether they've been, you know, even brief surveys. We have a question form that you can fill out on, online, certainly through updates have said, please call, please email. And a lot of people have. So just so everyone knows, a lot of people have, most people have. You know, the PCN has been wonderful, you know, just in terms of keeping, you know, lines of communication open. You know, the board meetings, newsletters, all the different ways of sharing information. We've, we've really tried to make sure that we've, we've had that available to people. So we were just hoping that this would give us a starting point. We understand that desire and, and especially our community where we're so curious and, you know, we so, we'd love to, you know, have conversation and dialogue. I think, you know, hopefully this was a good start for us. I, I definitely understand why some, you know, some people might feel like they'd like more. But I hope that, you know, if nothing else, we try to keep it as transparent as possible with the questions being written just as they were put out. We didn't try to bunch them together and, you know, do anything that would make anybody think that, oh, well, that, is that my question or is that not my question? We really, the people that ask questions, we are appreciative. We, we know that everybody else, else out there that maybe didn't ask a question, I'm sure they're appreciative too. And I know there probably were some follow-up type of things that, that, that you'd like to know more about. So I really would encourage you to email me. We're going to send out a, a note after this meeting just, just to let you know what your options are in terms of more communication. And, you know, we may revisit that. We may revisit that in the near future about, you know, what other, what other modes of conversation or dialogue that we do need to have. So I'm sorry that it didn't, you know, necessarily meet everyone's needs, but I'm hoping it met most everyone's needs. And, and as much like I said, is we like that back and forth. I think sometimes it's, it's good and, and we've been here an hour now. And so I think, you know, it's a good amount of time. It's, it's, it's the right amount of time for us to have had this. So I really thank everyone for all of your questions and your time tonight. And hopefully if you have any questions, you will reach out. I'm available. I know our, our whole administrative team is, is available. We want to problem solve with you and we want, we, we want us to get back to normal as soon as feasibly possible. So please do just reach out. That's, that's what I'm recommending. That's what I'm hoping for everyone. So, and I just really yes, Stephen, thank you. I wanted to also say, Stephen, thank you so much for facilitating and asking the questions. You are, you know, your, your tenor and your voice is just the right, the right mood. So we really appreciate it.
I would like to say thank you to the panel for spending their evening with us. Thank you to the community for coming and bringing their questions. And remember that a recording of tonight's town hall, along with frequently asked questions, are going to be posted on the school's website at coci.net.
Want to add one thing. We forgot to address the school grant question. Yeah, that was oversight on my part. Yes, we absolutely have applied for several grants and received quite a few grants related specifically to COVID. And those grants went into staffing. I know we have a health consultant that is getting ready to come on staff to help us with some of the, the conversations that we're needing to have. And we've used some of this to purchase equipment and personal protective equipment as well as resources for teachers to use in remote learning. So yes, we absolutely have applied for every single grant that we were aware of and we, we definitely have benefited from that. So sorry, I meant to add that earlier and I forgot.
No, I thank you and I thank you for reminding people that we have hired a health consultant. I think that will be a real big help for all of us, you know, whether you're a parent or a faculty member or a teacher, what, you know, a staff member, whatever, whatever position you may hold, I think that, that kind of representation is really great. And I, one last thing too that I wanted to add, I'm so sorry, Stephen, for taking this part. I, I just want to remind people that we have a wonderful website that Lisa Cole put together for families. So if you could please take a look at that and if you have suggestions of things that you'd like to add to it, we would really appreciate that feedback because we're here for you and we're here to, to serve your, your kids and you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All have a great night.
Thank you.